I would like to go ahead and call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, August 9, 2021, 7:00 p.m. If we could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
The American Legion is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Gilroy? Yes. Lannion?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Here.
Weiss? Ryan?
Here.
I did receive a communication from Councilman Weiss that he had an obligation that was not going to be allowing him to be here, so I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilman Weiss.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now I'm looking for approval of agenda for this evening unless there's any changes that need to be made.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward? Please come forward, state your name and your address.
My name is Kent Hall, 509 Ripseeder Boulevard. Here to make a plea for any veterans. This parade for the Jubilee was very difficult. One of our fellows, 85 years old, I was afraid I might, I drove because I'm 75 and having trouble walking, so I drove behind in case I had to pick up in the fall. So we're looking for some younger veterans to help us out. We meet once a month, except in July and August. Typically, meetings are only about an hour long. And it's not a requirement by joining. The American Legion is about 2 million strong. So when we speak in Washington, DC, they listen. So that's the main thing. And then there's a lot of things we do locally to help out other veterans and participate in as much as we can. We do a lot of funerals and things like that as well, folding flags and so on. So if you know of someone, please have them contact me. A lot of people have been saying, yeah, one of these days, no, one of these days is not. That's it. Yes, sir.
And the American Legion post is located, you guys are jointly with the Eagles, right, down on High Street?
Yeah, the Eagles building used to be the American Legion building. Way before I got here, they sold it to the Eagles and they have a lifetime permission or permit to use the one room for meetings. But they did meet around a couple other places and there was, oh, some old fellows that had disagreements and, you know, crazy. Everybody's getting along now and, you know, we're kind of on the same page. The Eagles do a lot of good for the community and, like the Van Shell, the American Legion was a huge donor in that, using some of that money as well as the Walz Armor up there.
My parents were actually buried in the American Legion Hall before it became the Eagles Hall.
Really? Did they get buried in the township or in the city? The garage goes right through.
Right. So what time are the meetings, Kent?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock? All right.
Yep. First Thursday of the month, just once. Except July and August, we take those off.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
And hopefully our viewing audience.
By the way, I gotta say, kudos to Dan, he worked his behind off. I said something to his wife, she said, no, it's still there, so.
Well, thank you, Kent. And absolutely, there's so many opportunities in Williamson for people to become involved with service organizations and the American Legion is one of them. It's very important. So young veterans, contact Kent Hall or show up at the meeting. Any other member of the audience that would like to come forward? Okay, all right, moving right along. We've got the council meeting minutes of July 26, 2021. I'm looking for approval for those unless there are any changes that need to be made. I'm looking for that motion.
I'll move to approve the council meeting minutes of July 26, 2021.
Join support.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Noah, you've had an opportunity to go over our short accounts payable list for this meeting.
Yep, all the accounts look fantastic as usual to our great staff that sends them to me. I did have a couple quick questions for Corey and it was on the payments for the vector truck and the, and come to find out, I think we had about one payment left.
After this year, yeah, there's one more here.
Right, and then on the other one, we had?
So the loader is of another lease that we have. We have one, we have a payment this year and then after that, we have to make a decision. Will we pay the final payment, which is a bit more than the regular payment, and keep it, or will we turn it back over and lease again?
So with that being said, everything else looks fantastic. Great things for Rachel and her team. So I'd like to make a motion to pay checks, 74578 dated 7/23/21 to 74604 dated 7/20, looks like 29/21, and ACH 115 through 122 for a total of $242,672.62.
Great. Does anybody have any questions regarding accounts payable? All right, I'm looking for support for that motion. All right, thank you. Holly, can I have the roll, please? Bellinger?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy? Yes. Lannion?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Now we're going to go ahead and move into our action items. First on is an appointment of a council member for a term to expire 11/30/2022. We had three applicants. We had Jacob Imetz. We had Terry Hansen. We had Chuck Siebel. They were all here last council meeting and we were able to interview them, ask questions. And so now I'm going to ask for nomination for a council member for a term to expire 11/30/2022.
I guess I'd make a motion to nominate Terry Hansen to City Council for a term to expire 11/30/2022.
Okay. Do I have support or discussion?
I'll support it.
All right. So the one thing that I always charge somebody with, this is gonna be my discussion, my bit. When you leave a seat on a board, I do really hope that you will help to fill and bring in a replacement. And the reason why I do say that to applicants that have moved up to step into a role is now that is creating a vacancy on a very important board. I know that you've had approximately two years on that. I know that you just recently volunteered to be your ZBA appointee for planning. So I have to say that leaves me a little bit conflicted that I'm filling one seat and having virtually two seats open up. So I always do look for somebody to make those, help make those replacements happen because it is very difficult to fill seats.
Okay, question. Is it required that if you're on the council, you cannot be a member of the planning commission?
Well, what I do is I appoint my council members to, and currently Brandon Lannion is our planning commission. And we just moved him to planning by his request because it was something that he had great interest in. So you would not be filling that planning commission role. All right, so.
The ZBA thing?
ZBA is currently Dan. He's our council member and we always have alternates. So we have our council member that fills the seat and then we have an alternate that if that council member can't be there, the alternate goes and takes very good notes. Noah's currently our planning commission alternate. So I just wanted to make you aware of that because I feel that it's my due diligence to let you know that. So with that, we had a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion or comments, I will go ahead and ask Holly to call the roll. Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy? No.
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Welcome to council, Terry.
Thank you. I'm sworn in sometime in the next two weeks.
Yep, you would get ahold of Holly. She would go ahead and get you sworn in for council. You would take your seat at our next council meeting, which will be today, the 9th, so that will be the end of August.
Okay.
All right?
I have to say, I was not aware of the fact that I could not be unvoted if I?
So it's, the appointments are made by the mayor at the beginning of every calendar year. And so when we had Gene step down, who was our planning commission member from council, and this seat became open, I, you know, I heard the request from Brandon that he'd like to take a place, take that place. And so I did charge him with that and made him that seat number, so.
Mayor, you know, I'm on several alternates for the, so maybe I could talk and maybe he could do planning.
Sure. You've been on it for so many years. I can't imagine you giving that one up. But yes, we can be flexible, but because, you know, Brandon is brand new to that and I know he wants to get the experience and everything, it certainly could be, you could build an alternate if Noah would be willing to give up that seat.
I'm still on ZBA.
Yes, you are. You are very busy.
I'm on the cemetery board.
Yes, so.
I'm a bit sad about that. I've gotten to get to know the planning commission.
I know you have.
People on it and the process is involved and all that and I had no idea that was part of the deal.
But as a councilperson, you can still go to the open meetings.
You can go to the meetings, absolutely. As a public.
And if you choose to go to the meetings, as long as there's not more than, what, three council people there?
Yes.
You could speak.
Yes.
Because that would not break any Open Meetings Act.
Because we certainly wouldn't not want to do that. And we had that happen one other time on planning and we did have to ask a council member to leave the chambers. So we can't, we cannot form a quorum, you know, but we'll get into all of that once you take a seat up here, so. But, you know, again, Holly will reach out so that you can get sworn in before our next council meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you. Well, he certainly has the opportunity because we do have a lot of seats open on all of our boards. They are posted on our city website, absolutely, take a look at them. Again, if you click on each board, it'll give a brief description of what the board does, how often they meet, when they meet. And then if you ever have any questions regarding board seats, you can contact City Hall, you can contact one of us because we've all been appointed to different seats and chairs.
Yeah, we'd be interested, yeah.
All right, great, thank you so much. And thank you for being here this evening, I appreciate it. So moving on to our next action item, we have the liability and property pool insurance renewal. And so I'm looking for that motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the Michigan Municipal League liability and property pool insurance proposal for the policy term 10/1/2021 through 9/30/2022 in the amount of $73,757.
All right, thank you very much. Any discussion or any questions for Rachel? You're almost good at this. Is there anything you'd like to?
I was really excited this year that it's a $108 increase. I always, I mean, that's pretty darn close to being the same. So with insurance, you just never know and we are really happy with this renewal.
Fantastic, excellent. Any questions for Rachel at all before I ask for the roll? All right. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy? Yes. Lannion?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right. Our last agenda item, action item, is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the city of Williamson zoning ordinance to revise Article 2 as to garage orientation regulations in a multi-family use. Corey?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a result of some action at the planning commission level over the last three months. Council may recall that about two years ago now, we amended the ordinance dealing with garage orientation in every district but multifamily districts. And we've had somebody interested in doing a development on what's called an R3 parcel, which is multifamily type developments. And there was a section of the code that was not looked at when we looked at this two years ago. And so given the planning commission's desire to amend the code to basically get rid of some of these regulations that came into place in 2010 that made a lot of our existing homes nonconforming with the way their garages were oriented, the planning commission was eager to do that. So they went through their process, there was a public hearing held at their last meeting, and they ultimately voted to recommend these changes. The changes are fairly minor, but they are impactful for that development district. And this will primarily impact vacant land, so if somebody wants to come in and, for example, as a lot of the pictures showed, do like a four-unit apartment-style dwelling, they can have a garage that faces the front as opposed to the current language, which says it has to be 10 feet behind the front facade. So we did tour a lot of different areas like this. It's a very popular development style that right now can't be done in Williamson. So we were very, or the planning commission had a lot of support for that change. Tonight is a first reading of an ordinance. There were required two readings in order to adopt and we did provide, you know, the various resources that the planning commission looked at.
Great. And questions for Corey on this? I know that, yes, you guys started this back in 2019 and so this is good work. This is really good work because that was one of the things that planning commission was charged with. And when McKenna was here, was going through and cleaning up ordinances, so this is great work and I'm glad it's finally come full circle with this last piece for this particular ordinance. No questions for Corey? All right, if there's no questions for Corey, I will go ahead and ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance to amend the city of Williamson zoning ordinance to revise Article 2 as to the garage orientation regulations in multi, multiple family uses.
Great, do I have support for this?
Support, Bellinger. And I was at the last planning commission and went through all this in detail, so this is a great group of authorities.
Great, excellent. Well, I've got a motion and I've got support. If there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and ask Holly to call the roll. Gilroy? Yes. Lannion?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
All right. That concludes our action items for this evening. We did not have any discussion items on our agenda. We did not receive any correspondence, so I will move right into department head reports. And Corey, you're on top. But there's no memo.
No memo.
So it's a surprise.
The only thing I want to say is just thank the Jubilee Committee. Councilmember Ryan's is a big part of what they do. But I know there's a lot of people that make this happen and just from my perspective, you know, when you see the downtown and Howard Alston Park just busy with activity and people walking back and forth, it's the best thing about living in a small town and being part of a small community. So just my thanks go out to everybody that was a big part of that. And thanks to Chief Wolf and his crew as well for having good staffing and all the reserves that were helpful over the weekend to make sure all of these events and all these people coming to town went off without a hitch. So appreciate everybody's service.
All right, great, thanks. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it right over to Chief and see what his follow-up is.
I got nothing. No, I was gonna say exactly the same thing. We got through, we got a national night out, very great responses from that. We did it same as last year with the going to the neighborhoods and so we had a real good time doing that, a lot of positive feedback, like Corey said, we were just hopping and it was very uneventful.
Great. So question for you, so I know we had some new reserves come in, so how was it for some of those, their first experience with Jubilee? Any feedback from them?
I had no negative feedback. We had a lot of fun. We had a couple really new ones, probably with traffic, but Bob Thompson does a great job. I was, I'm not gonna lie, I was very nervous just because of the unknown.
Yeah.
Like he had that thing down to a T and traffic was great and we shut it down. I think there was another person in the parade that was a little nervous about when we were gonna shut it down. I'm getting that phone call, it's coming with a ready paper, shut it out. So it was kind of a few words, so I'm getting that phone call. So, no, it was, it was very nice.
Awesome, great. Well, you made it through your first Jubilee as chief, so congrats to that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, subcommittee, committee reports. Anyone like to speak on any meetings that they've attended?
Just to follow up, I went to the planning commission, the last go-around, and was very impressed with all the planning commission members. I was the alternate for the meeting and they've done an excellent job on catching up and looking at all the verbiage and working with our attorney to make sure the languages were appropriate for moving forward, so.
Great.
Great job, guys.
Thanks, Noah, appreciate it. Anybody else have anything they would like to share from their meeting? All right. I'm not gonna make my record, but that's okay. All right, audience participation again. We have the opportunity, if anybody would like to come forward to speak?
So my name is Tim Morrissey, I live at 147 East Sherwood Road and I attended the Jubilee, which was wonderful. The crowd was large, but disappointed, and it's not to criticize, just feedback. The marchers, the businesses, or the lack thereof. I was expecting to see the veterinarian or the restaurant. The demolition went by, not disparaging them, but the funeral hearse that went by, would have liked to have seen more businesses, unless you solicited them and they said no.
So you're speaking about the parade?
Yes.
Okay, the parade.
The parade itself, the lack of local business. It was not representative of the wonderful services that we have. So just feedback again, you may have asked a thousand people and were told no 999 times, so that may have been the reason for the lack of?
No, that's great. What we do is we put a blanket invite out there to anyone and everyone who wants to come out to the parade and be in the parade. And some years, we get a lot of people and some years, we don't. And this year, we had a lot of very cool stuff. This was the first time that Horse Lines had brought out their horse-drawn hearse in probably 20 years. And that was very cool. But you're right, there were a lot of other, a lot of other businesses that sometimes are represented and they didn't come out. But we had a flyover for the first time that I don't think in 50 years we've ever had a flyover. But the parade was short and there was a lot of, a lot of, I mean, in the past, the parade lineup has gone all the way down to Zimmer Road when we have had, when we had it going the other way. That was, that was not the case this year.
And if I just had to guess, I would think that a lot of the local businesses are price trouble and with staff shortages and different things.
Or cost of putting something in the parade.
And just putting some extra on their plate of having to put together a presentation.
You would think the cost versus reward, if, I'm making, if it costs me $250 to drive my car down there and the amount of eyes that are there, if I get one person, that's a payback instantly, instantly.
Absolutely. And we appreciate residents that come and give us feedback like that. And I will put in a shameless plug for the Jubilee that they are almost looking for volunteers. Possibly, you might get a little follow-up with that. You're absolutely right. And I can attest to that because I've been in several parades as a mom of a scout, as, you know, council member. You know, yes, we've had really large parades and then we've had years where it's been small. And so I think, you know, plus having last year off and getting, you know, trying to reopen after COVID, I have to, you know, say that I know that next year will be better. And so, but this year was pretty, pretty awesome in my opinion, so.
Flyover, double flyover, fabulous.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that.
Just need to coordinate that with the 360 Boy Scout.
Well, with that, we're on to council member comments and of course, I'm gonna leave Mr. Ryan's for last, so go ahead, Brandon.
I guess I'll just echo what Chief and Corey said, Jubilee was great. Obviously, it's the first time I had my son get to be able to, I mean, persuade my two-year-old Ken, but he loved it, he loved the child's parades, I mean, great job.
Noah?
I just want to compliment all the service organizations that help support it as well, the Quonians, everybody that was involved, the Scouts, and it just all fell together as usual. I enjoyed the car shelf down at Dan down here, the chicken was great, just had a great time. And then thank you for everybody that attended the Boy Scout pancake breakfast. I was baking sausages and flipping pancakes, so we greatly appreciate the support and so. And Dan, fantastic, thank you, you did a great job, thank you.
Tommy?
Yeah, I'm kinda gonna echo what everybody else said, but the Jubilee, I thought was awesome. And, you know, a big thank you to the Jubilee Committee because I know there's a bunch of little hands that help, but there's a core group of about five guys that run their tails off for about six months and then especially the week of the Jubilee, so that doesn't go without notice. I think with all the obstacles they had through COVID and having to change the date and everything else, I don't know if it could've went any better. It was an awesome week and I thought all the events went really well, seemed busy, everybody seemed to have a good time, so I was really excited about it.
I want to say kudos to the fireworks, those were the best fireworks I've seen in years.
So I'm gonna say what the other councilmembers said. And Dan and I have talked quite a bit because, you know, we live right down the street from each other. It was amazing, it was really amazing. I know how difficult of a decision it was for them to have to cancel last year. And the, all of the moving parts and the behind the scenes of everything that they have done since determining they were going to cancel last year and to get this put in place, to have enough time to work forward like you guys did, I think you guys hit it out of the park. Every single event, you know, I've had feedback, especially when I was sitting in a dump tank for two and a half hours. And Corey was in there too. So, you know, new things that were brought forward, improvements on old things that have been done in the past. The fireworks were amazing, the National Guard vehicles were incredible, having food trucks available and having it be okay to have the Lions food, which was the steak sandwiches, which I heard were amazing. They ran out when I wanted one. And then having those food trucks to be there and everything being in such harmony. And that's what I really feel like this whole week was, was there was such harmony in town, people that came in, I just can't say enough. I probably could keep going, but I am going to go ahead and just turn this right over to this guy because I know that he probably has a lot to say. And yes, please remember, there's so many other people behind the scenes. And so at some point, Dan is gonna give a huge shout out to everybody, but he doesn't have his list here today.
The list is like, I also, I also run the Jubilee Facebook page and if anybody saw the post from late Sunday night, I intentionally thanked all of our volunteers, but I didn't start tagging people because if I did, I knew I was gonna miss at least 10 people and I didn't want to, I didn't want to hurt anybody's feelings. But this was, this was a transition year for Jubilee in a lot of ways and it came out amazing. We had no idea how, how this was gonna turn out. It was, we had a new, new board president for, for the committee. We had actually all new officers for the committee going into this year. It was our first time running it after having a committee, having committee officers that had been there for a very long time, so it was all new. We'd all done it for a long time, but we had not, not been at the top. And then on top of that, want to talk about the Lions for a little minute. The Lions, Williamson had been here for 56 years and had done an immense amount of things for the community, all made possible because of the Lions Food and Beverage Tent down there where they would raise their money. They, they built three houses from scratch in Williamson for needy families and would go around and build, build handicap ramps and things like that. Everyone knows they help with childhood blindness and things like that, but there were a lot of other big projects that the Lions did. And they got tired. And in March, they came to us and they said, we can't do the tent anymore. And we go, uh, uh, okay, because Jubilee had always done everything around the tent, but the Lions had handled the tent. So in addition to having a whole new board, we also took over the tent for the first time. And I can't thank everyone that came out and helped us to pull it off enough. It was absolutely amazing. But some very key people who, I'm gonna backtrack, sorry, my brain is so fried, so.
I played your fear, but I was really worried.
We had, we had some kids, some 15 and 16-year-old kids that stepped up in the tent for us this year and without them, the food service would have absolutely fallen apart. We had two girls who helped Beth Brier, one of our main cogs, who did an absolutely amazing job with the kids parade and got us all kinds of volunteers for the tent. She got these girls to help her with the kids parade and they came down Wednesday night in a tent after the kids parade and they're getting some dinner and they look and they see we're absolutely slammed behind the counter and they go, can we help? We go, sure, come on back, here's a hat. And we taught them how to do it and they did not leave until like 10 o'clock Saturday night. That's Maddie, Kyler, Quinn, Ian, and Connor, who did an absolutely amazing job. I occasionally hear people talk about youth of today and go, well, we had a great example of the youth of today all through Jubilee, they absolutely knocked it out of the park. We had just so many different things. Mirandorf Meats stepped up huge.[1784.01] Mirandorf Meats stepped up huge, we had a snafu with our steak sandwich order. We told everyone that, "Oh yeah, we're bringing back the steak sandwiches." And then there was a huge snafu with the order from the people we were ordering it from, and we didn't have it Wednesday, and we called up Mirandorf's out here, and we go, "Do you have steak?" And they go, "We can get you some steak." And they sliced it, they gave it to us at a great price, and they took care of us, that was huge. In the last minute to get it in the quantity we needed, and they dropped everything and took care of it for us, that was huge. Lakota Electric, the beer cooler went down in the middle of the day on Thursday, and we called up Lakota, Sean Bolstrom came out in the middle of the day, dropped everything, came out and fixed our beer cooler, and then didn't charge us. That was absolutely amazing. The whole community stepped up in a big way to make sure that this all came off. The reserves were great, they helped with all the parades, they helped, they did a great job down in the tent, they were up here helping with Worship Fest Saturday night. Cannot say enough about Bob Thompson. Bob Thompson was absolutely amazing. In the midst of all the change, Bob Thompson has been there, done that, and he was not afraid to tell everybody, "Hey, this is the way we've done it before, and, you know, if you want to change it, you can change it, but we did this for a reason." And that was very helpful, and I cannot say enough about all the help that Bob gave. People talked about the fireworks. The fireworks were absolutely amazing. That was Mark Joseph, who's a local guy here in town, he approached us last year before we had to cancel, and he said, "Hey, how about we put on a fireworks show?" We hadn't had fireworks for Jubilee in probably over 20 years. And we came together as a committee and we said, "We want to have fireworks." And he came to us, we met down there in the park, said, "Oh yeah, we can pull it off in this space," and then he gave us a number, and we go, "I don't know if we can pull that off." And I went around town, and we'd already been getting sponsorship, and even with the sponsorship we had, we didn't know if we could do it. And Cardinal Fabricating, longtime business in town, stepped up to the plate, Zinda's brand-new business in town, stepped up to the plate and said, "We're gonna give you $4,000 for fireworks." And then after they gave us $4,000 for fireworks, Mark Joseph threw another $4,000 of his own money on, doubled the amount, and then did it himself. So, if you're looking for fireworks, go buy them from Sparky's Fireworks in Jackson. He wants to come back next year, and we said, "Please, we will definitely have you back." And he's got some very cool ideas, things I don't really know a lot about, he calls it a fireworks opera, where you set it to music. That's something we're toying around with sometime in the future, but some very cool stuff like that. And then I have to shout out our assistant clerk in here real quick. Barb Burke helped out with the parade Saturday morning, and then after helping out with the parade, she thought she was relaxing down in the tent. And we didn't have anybody to run the gate for the Derby, and I was running around, we had about two hours worth of work left to finish off things for the Derby, and it was 4:00, and we opened the gate at 5:00. So, we were running like crazy, and about 5:00, I look over and I go, "Huh, we have the tickets set up, but there's nobody sitting back there, and there's already a line for me." So, I have got to find somebody. And I walked in the front of the Lyons tent, and there was Barb standing there with the new chamber president, and I go, "Barb, I need some help," and she goes, "Ugh." And I go, "Please," and she goes, "Ugh." And she goes, "Do I have time to get a water?" And I go, "You have time to get a water," and then she goes, "What do you need?" And she went over and she took tickets for it for two and a half, three hours.
Which is not an easy job.
It is not. That is one of the toughest jobs you have because everybody wants him, and that that was huge. That was like the example of the whole town stepping up and helping, and we...
Do we know what the attendance was at the Derby?
We think that the attendance was around 2,000 people. That's our estimate, was we had about 2,000 people at the Derby, which in the 11 years I've been doing this, we beat, look, two years ago, we had a very large Derby attendance, and we think we beat that by maybe 400 people or so. It was absolutely huge, and I know, I went around this morning, I didn't get to everybody, but I tried to get to everyone, I talked to the Scouts, I talked to Lance Rubek, he was very happy with the turnout for the Pancake Breakfast. I talked to Williamson Worship Fest, they thought they did much more attendance than they did two years ago. The Kwanions were very happy with the craft show. I talked to Jim Conroy from the Rotary, and he was worried they were going to run out of randomly generated numbers for their ducks, there were so many ducks. Everybody was, all the organizations that participated and helped out did amazing, and it all came together very well. After a long nap, we're gonna get started on next year, but, oh, thank you, thank you. I need to give a big shout-out to Mac Donnelly, our Jubilee President. He stepped up in a huge way. He'd been a part of Jubilee for nearly 30 years, but never in the top spot. This was his first year, and he absolutely hit it out of the park. He's an extremely organized individual, and he likes lists and he likes spreadsheets, and that helped, that helped all the rest of us who are more of like just-go-do-it type of people, and nope, we have, this truck is coming in at this time, somebody's gotta go, and that was huge. And if you see Mac around town, make sure to give Mac a huge thank you and a high-five because unfortunately, Max's stepdad, who's a big fixture of the community for 60, 70 years, Dexter Thornton, who owned Thorpey Construction, passed away last night. So, they made it through Jubilee, but will be having a service for Dexter very soon. So, if you see Mac, tell him thanks for Jubilee and give him a big hug, but that's what I've got for tonight.
Well, I think that's where we're gonna end it. So, I'm going to go ahead and call to adjourn at 7:36 PM. Thank you all for being here.